Welcome to the Crossword Interviews, the show where we sit down with local elected leaders from all corners of this great country. Over the course of this episode, we will, of course, be learning about who our guest is and what drives them. But we'll also be learning about how they're working to make their community a better place for everyone who lives there and works there. And today we are honored to be sitting down with Brazzo County, Alberta councillor Cara Westernland. But before we get into the interview with the councillor, I just want to take a moment and say thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for tuning in for another great episode of the Crossboarded Interviews. Municipalities don't often get the limelight as our federal and provincial counterparts do. And I'm hoping that with this show, people are realizing that municipalities truly do matter. So if you can hit that subscribe button so you can stay up to date on all of our latest interviews with municipal leaders from across Canada. Now, onto their interview. Cara, thank you so much for doing this greatly appreciated. I want to start with A, long time no see. For those who remember, we had Cara back on the show after the provincial election. So we thought we'd bring her back onto the show to talk about herself and her duty to serve. So I want to start with that question, and that is, where did your sense of duty to serve your community come from Cara?
You know, that is a it's a soul searching question. And I've been asked that often. I've been on on council and fortunate enough to be elected fourth term. So I've been serving for 14 years, but I'm going to take you way, way back to when I was a little girl. I grew up on a farm in the area of Brazu County, and I'm actually a very, very proud 4H member. So if you were aware of that program, it is very much about giving back to your community, very much learning a sense of community. So from a very young age at nine years old, all the way till I was 19, I was with that organization. And I truly believe that sense of of community duty came from my experience in growing up in the 4H world. So taught me a lot about 4H, about a lot about public speaking. I have picked hundreds of miles of garbage out of the ditch that keeps you humble when you're cleaning up other people's trash out of the out of the ditch. And the program itself is very community orientated. So I have to honestly say way back from when I was a little girl, I think it's something that's been instilled in me for a very long time. So.
While I don't know, I never went into the 4H club, I do know people who went through it. I know there is a sense of public speaking that you do. There's a lot of agricultural shows that you do. So how does someone from a 4H club become a councillor for their community? Take me through that journey. Was politics discussed as a young age where you got the interest and it just ran with it? Or how did you come to A, run in an election in 2010?
Well, funny story, absolutely not. My background, actually, I have a diploma in broadcasting. So at a very young age, at 16, our local radio station allowed me the opportunity to, I was a weekend news anchor. So sports, weather and news at 16, very early mornings, often in the office at four o'clock in the morning. And a dedication and commitment there. So actually, that's my background. I worked in media for about 10 years. It brought me back to the community in, I would say about 2006, it brought me back into the Brazu County and Drayton Valley area. And I was actually covering local politics through my, through my job as the news director at the local radio station. And that's what really piqued my interest. There were some issues going on in the community. The big one at the time was a swimming pool in our community was up for debate. And there was zero support at the time on the rural side, which I lived in and was and grew up in and was now raising my family in. And I thought, you know, hey, you're not speaking for everybody in the community when, you know, the the no to the swimming pool had come. So actually, to be honest with you, it doesn't get much rural than this. We were literally around the campfire one Friday night, having a couple of beverages. And I was talking with my friends and someone's like, well, isn't there an election coming up? Like, you know, if you feel so strongly about this, why don't you throw your name in? So at the tender age of 26, I had less than 48 hours to get the signatures required. Basically get my poop in a group and I filed, I had zero idea what I was in for, what I was doing. But by the grace of my community, the minute I filed my paperwork, my phone didn't stop ringing and people offering their support, giving me the guidance that I needed to get through the election. So I literally jumped in feet first, no second guessing. I just, that's how I run in life. I just go in, you know, doing 250 miles an hour. I'll figure it out as we go. And I was very fortunate to win in 2010. And the people must must believe and see something in me because I'm still standing. So and it's been 14 years. And every single day I get up, it's my passion. It's my drive. It's it's about helping my community and it's, yeah. I'm I often say I'm raising my family here. I am doing business here and it's just, it's such a strong connection with the community. So.
So that 2010 election, it seems like it kind of was a experience in itself because you file your paperwork, you run, you win. But the thing that you forget, and I'm not sure you, I'm certain you don't forget, but you don't mention is you go up against an incumbent in the election. And in municipalities, that is a unique beast to go up against an incumbent and defeat an incumbent. And I mean that with respect, I don't know the person you defeated, but just to go up against someone like that. For you, was there any apprehensions around that aspect of putting your name forward, saying, okay, I, I, it's a small community. I might know this councillor, I might know this person, and I'm going to put my name forward to run against them.
You know, Ian, you hit it on the head. It is a small community. So yes, I knew I knew the the individual I was running against. I believe 18 plus years on council when I decided to put my name in. But it's really important when you decide to run for these roles, you're in in my case, and in my circumstances, I wasn't running against the person I was running for the position. And I was running for that opportunity to represent my community in that role. So it was, yeah, it was difficult and it was, once I realized it is a difficult task to take an incumbent out, like you said. But I door knocked, I pounded pavement left, right and center. I made it a goal of mine to hit every single door in my community and meet people face to face. And I knew that was important. I know that's really important in rural Alberta is that face to face and that relationship building. So I'm, I'm, I'm very much an extrovert. I'm very approachable. And so it was actually regardless of what the results were in 2010 for the results, I had learned so much. And I was, I was becoming a better person every day with the type of conversations and the door knocking that was happening. So win or lose at that point, it was still a win in my books.
So you've been successfully elected once and reelected three times in 2013, 2017 and 2021, reelected, which encompasses 14 years in municipal politics. And it's an interesting question I always pose, but you get to answer it in a different way because you've been there for such a, an extended period of time. How much has municipal government changed over the last 14 years as a councillor and as a councillor as whole? What has been the biggest change that you have seen that you weren't dealing with in 2010 when you first got elected? But now it seems like you're dealing with it on a regular basis in 2023.
Well, you know, the big one that instantly comes to my mind, obviously, my community was hit hard by the wildfires this spring. In the past, we had had two previous fires. We've actually, this is the third time I've been a part of council declaring a disaster and state of emergency. So but this fire was different this time and it hit the community a lot different than the lodgepole and the Lindale fires in the in the in the previous history of the community. It was, it's absolutely devastating and I'm honestly, I'm trying not to tear up. It's still, it still hurts. My community is still hurting and we're still trying to 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 build. We were very fortunate. We only lost five houses in the community. But the type of psychological damage when you're literally, and I was with the residents, I often to times, people forget I'm as elected official, I'm human too. I have a family. And when you're packing your bags, I was packing my bags too as well. And I remember coming up to the intersection of Highway 22 and looking back at the town and in the community to the south of me and just seeing a wall of flames and a wall of smoke. I it's incredible. It's, 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 it's hard to describe the fear, the pain and that feeling of uncertainty and in our community, I know it's been a few months, we're all back home, but it's still lingers there. And I feel for communities that are going through that. Another big change that I've, I've seen shift in being there for 14 years is, you know, our revenue streams too as well. The, the, the constant downloading and the pressure from the provincial government that they're putting on 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 rural municipalities. And I've been fortunate to experience two different, completely different sides of the partisan with, with, you know, having an NDP provincial government and with a UCP government. And one thing that I can tell you, being in my position, being nonpartisan is both levels are both parties when in power. We're both putting constant pressure and downward downloading onto the municipalities. And it's coming to a critical point. I know in my community, even with the pause in the oil and gas tax revenue that we can pull as a municipality, we're seeing between a $4 and $6 million hit every year and it's massive, absolutely massive. We're talking rural projects, we're talking infrastructure projects that are getting pushed aside and having to be delayed because the funding is not coming in. And you know, we're, we are on a critical tipping point right now. I think even in my community on that funding level and that that constant downward pressure. 14 years ago, I wasn't dealing with with healthcare issues. It's a provincial mandate. It's, it's in their portfolio. But I am spending countless hours, actually almost immeasurable hours in time on on trying to help my community in healthcare, trying to retain physicians, trying to recruit physicians into the community, trying to keep our hospital open and going. We have a beautiful facility. It's completely underutilized in the community. And it's, it's hard. It's, it's hospitals are our heart and soul of our communities. And when you have your emergency room shut down, even for a small period of, you know, eight hours or an overnight period, it's, it is, it is detrimental to the community. So we're definitely seeing, like I said, I think the provincial downloading and provincial, what normally traditionally in the past were were issues handled by the provincial government are not being addressed properly and they're, they were ending up on our laps. As of course, we are the the government closest to the people. I do grocery shop in my community. I, you know, get my vehicle fixed and serviced in the in the community. You know, I've had ran a small oilfield company up until recently. So it's, yeah, it's, it's difficult. It's, it's very frustrating from my point of view of seeing over the years, the the pressures that are coming on, but it's a challenge too. And I also, I, I, it's my passion to when, when the challenge is set forth, trying to find and navigate your way through those challenges. And so it gets me up every day.
You talk about the jurisdictional roles, healthcare being a provincial issue, maybe housing or even social services being a more provincial federal issue. But residents don't care. And I, and I say that with respect, they want, if they come to you with an issue, they want you to address it, whether it be a federal, provincial or even municipal. In the last few years, I have seen a blurring of jurisdictional roles that people understand. They don't understand that municipalities have a role to play, province has a role to play in the federal government because we're seeing downloading. Have you seen that locally where people are approaching you with more provincial or even federal issues compared to what the municipality is required and supposed to be working on?
Absolutely. And it's, it's almost happening, happening, happening daily in my community. Being a, you know, a young mom, I'm, I'm, I'm in the grocery stores, I'm at the arena with my kids and doing different sports in the after school and in the evenings, quite busy. And that you are, you nailed it on the head, that conversation. You know, we might have touched on it 10 years ago and it was just a little bit of a conversation, but right now that's, it's dominating. It's, it's actually interesting. I'm finding provincial and federal issues are actually dominating the conversation rather than our actual municipal, a little bit more local focus, focused issues. So it is, it's frustrating and I, and I think it fell on our lap because municipal elected officials, of course, are very much often more approachable. And we're definitely in our communities a lot more. And I do have, you know, we represent a smaller area too as well. So and it is frustrating and it's, you know, having that conversation, I'm a fixer. So when I get a problem and it's sent to me, I want to fix it right away. And it is frustrating. I do lose, I do lose many nights of sleepover over issues that honestly, they are just outside of my control. But I will do everything that I can to push and try and help get some solutions to those problems, even though that they're out of my reach. But.
You say you're a fixer and I want to pick up on that word here because you know, you can't do everything. You do not have an unlimited supply of money to fix everything. But there are certain things that you as a council, and I say you as a council can do to alleviate some of the issues that people may have. Is there a weight that comes with that responsibility that you know that the decisions you make when you go into that council chambers? When you make a motion, when you pass a service level increase, when you pass a tax increase or not a tax increase, that it's going to impact your residents the day after you make it. And you may hear about it at the oil change or at the grocery store. How much weight do you put on yourself to make sure you're doing the job correctly, but not affecting people the most?
It is a tremendous weight on on my shoulders and my council shoulder. And when we make decisions to increase fees or or increase taxes. That being said, we haven't had any tax increase in my municipality, inflation and has has looked after that. So I'm very fortunate that way. But those discussions do happen and it is a tremendous weight because like I said, oftentimes people forget or think elected officials sometime, some, for some reason are up on a pedestal and we're not like, you know, I am just an average day, everyday lady in the community, just trying to help my community, you know, do better and be better tomorrow. And it is a tremendous weight. I would be amiss if I didn't tell you. I mean, I lose, I lose hundreds of hours of sleep. And there is many, many sleepless nights in my home, just worrying.
Even after 14 years?
Even after 14 years. Actually, I think it's worse now than it was before because I think I have a better understanding and I've been around to see some of the diff, the decisions and and the impacts it does have on the community. And it does definitely hit me a little bit different when you've had that experience and, you know, and I'm right in the thick of it. Like, you know, I have no problem sharing. I'm 39s and I've got three kids in the community. And, you know, at the end of the day, I'm just a mom and I'm just trying to make a difference in my kids' lives and trying to raise, you know, good human beings. And at the same time, help my community too at the same time. So.
Is it hard to balance that though? Because I can imagine there's days that you just want to be Cara, just want to go play with your kids in the park or go to a restaurant or go out walking and not be inundated with issues that your community faced. But you know, after 14 years that you are councillor 24/7, no matter where you are or what you do, you are the councillor. Have you struck a balance between being councillor and just being Cara and mom from time to time?
Short answer is no. I am always mom and I'm always a councillor 365 days a year and it doesn't matter if it's Christmas Day, a birthday, I will step out and take a call and try my best to help my residents and.
Have your, has your family adapted to that lifestyle?
They have. You know what? It's, you know, I was out for dinner Friday night and actually I had another councillor from another community from Strathcona with me that evening. And I actually had three different conversations in a matter of an hour with residents just approaching me at the table. But you know, I honestly, I love it. And I, that's another part. I actually, I, I, I really hold that near and dear to my heart that people feel comfortable even in those settings to come to me and and say, hey, you know, this is kind of give me a little nudge and say, this is what's going on. And, you know, and I always say like, I can't, I can't fix it right now, but I'll grab your name, your number. And I said, let me, let me work on it. And, you know, my staff were in on Monday. I know I'm here, but I said, you know, I probably might not get a response till Monday, but let me get on it right away. And that's the other piece is my administration and my staff in my, in my municipality are phenomenal. I will send, you know, an email or a text on a Saturday. And I always tell them, don't respond until Monday, you know, after eight o'clock when you're in the office, but they usually respond to me right away anyways. So it's, they're just as, I think, deeply passionate too about the work that they do in the communities that they're working in. So it's a very, very grateful that way and very, very humble one, working with staff like that too. So.
One last question before I turn to the second segment here, and that's about apathy. I have noticed there's a big apathy. There's, there's a massive apathy within municipal governments. People don't engage. People don't want to give their feedback. They, they want to go to the sexy politics, the provincial politics, the federal politics, the partisanship. Municipalities are often forgotten about unless your water doesn't turn on or your garbage isn't picked up or your pothole isn't fixed in a timely manner. Municipalities are often forgotten. Do you find that?
Um, in my community, I would actually disagree with that. I find my, my rural residents are very engaged. And I'll put it this way, if something's wrong, I usually know about it within five minutes. I usually get a call. I get a DM on Facebook, like on social media, people are reaching out. I know what's, you know, you, you find out quite quickly what's going on and what the issues are. And they're quite engaged and actually I'm impressed in how engaged even provincially and federally that the residents are in our area. And it's, at the end of the day, it helps us make better decisions at the table when we're hearing from more residents and more different, more different points of view too. And at the end of the day, it's good governance and honestly, it, it, it helps into those decision makings when you hear from, you know, not the same five people or the same, you know, the, the same 10 people that show up to everything that always have an opinion on everything. But I get, I get random calls from people and all the time actually. And it's just like, hey, did you know about this? This is what my thoughts are. And I always so appreciative to hear that because it is a different lens on a, you know, on, on the issues that we're facing. And it is difficult, you know, you get, you get elected in this role with what you knew in your background before. And you've got to be really willing to peel your lens off your own eyes and like honestly, open up the world and not stare at the world like this. And well, this is how it affects me. And it's, when you take this role on in municipal, it isn't about you. And actually, you actually get forgotten about, I find quite a bit more because you have to think about everybody else before you think about yourself in this role. So.
You, you bring up an interesting point about that echo chamber that some people find themselves in, particularly councils. People have social media, they engage with people that way. But you have to get a range of viewpoints from your residents because you have to make the ultimate decision. In those conversations where people have called you up, has it ever swayed you in a decision that you were thinking about making with an issue in front of council where you said, oh, this report seems pretty black and white. Seems like I'm going to be able to vote for it. And then you hear from residents and go, oh, I didn't realize it was going to affect people this way. So maybe I should rethink it or ask a few more questions of administration or fellow councillors about these issues and see if they're hearing about the same thing that I'm hearing about.
Absolutely. You, I often, I joked even with someone dealing with some of our new elected officials as they come into the role. And I say, I actually tell them a story. I said, I'll walk in here thinking one way. And then the public have had a chance to address something. And I'm like, oh, you know, I didn't think about it that way. You've got a great point. I'm actually going to change what I was, how I was going to vote by after listening to you. And I think that's really key and really important in this role. And I know you often hear, because I've been through four elections. It's like, oh, while you, you know, you waffled on this, on this topic and you changed your vote, you know, six months later. And I said, well, you know what, I did, but six months prior, I had this amount of information. And six months later, I had new set of information with a different lens and and different facts in it. And facts that weren't available six months ago. And absolutely, okay, call it waffling. But yes, you know what? At least I listened and I changed my mind. Once I got, you know, got a little bit more educated on what was happening. So I do push back because we do get accused of that. Oh, you're waffling on a, on a, on a decision. And I said, you know, no, you got to be really careful with that because like as new information becomes available, you absolutely need to be open minded enough to change your thought process and.
I know I said one question and now we're like three questions later, but I'm fascinated with this conversation. You know, you're not going to please 100% of the people though. Yeah. And I can imagine for someone who wears the weight of this responsibility that you have on your shoulders, that must put an added pressure on you that you know, you're not going to please everyone. But there has to be a respectful dialogue that when you make a decision, you talk to people if they have questions or concerns. How do you balance that aspect of the job? Because people are about to start putting their name forward for their next election in two years in Alberta. People in Saskatchewan who might be listening to this are heading to the polls next year. And there are people out there who think I'm going to be able to please 100% of the people, but you're not going to. How have you been able to balance the, the idea that you need to make the best interest for everyone, even if it upsets them?
It's difficult, Chris, and I'm going to be honest with you. I've lost friends in the last 14 years that were, you know, considered childhood friends of mine because they, you know, disagreed with what I was doing and the decisions that I made. And it would be amiss if I didn't tell you it affected me personally and mentally too as well. I've, you know, lost family members that won't speak to me. My, our company in the past has lost contracts because, you know, oh, Cara made this decision around the council table. We don't agree with it. So we're going to yank this contract from your private company. It happens and it's difficult, but you truly have to believe in yourself and believe what you're doing to keep pushing forward. And anybody facing that, I just, you know, you're not alone. And that's one thing I felt early on, and you know, probably the first term of being on council, I truly felt alone. I wasn't sure and I kept a lot of it in because you don't want that, you know, that public judgment on you that you were struggling with, you know, how it was affecting you personally. But what I have learned is I am not alone. And probably this conversation and anyone listening is probably going to be able to relate to some of that. I know at some point. And, you know, the difficult decisions and some of those awkward circumstances you find yourself in council. You'd be amazed out there how many other council, councillors are going through that and actually elected officials too at the same time. Might not be the exact examples I'm giving you, but they, they all feel it too as well. And, you know, I often get, well, you're a woman and, you know, all those kinds of things. And I have to admit, you know, being a woman, and I've got a little, you know, I've got that. I actually, because being from rural Alberta, I don't mean to, it's hard for me to bring it up, but I, you know, knocking on doors, well, what are you doing here? You should be at home raising your family because that's where you belong. And I pushed back a little bit and I said, you know, being a woman, I'm like, and being a mom and raising a family. I said, yes, but I bring that perspective to the table because guess what? I am cheap. I am raising three kids and I take that, that, but that budgeting thought process to my council. You know, I was involved in an oilfield company for over 16 years, you know, managing finances. And I'm like, by the way, I have small business backgrounds and, and trying to navigate an oilfield company through three economic downturns and still standing at the end of the day. I mean, that, that's no easy feat either. And by the way, I'm still a mom and raising my kids who, you know, go all to these activities and stuff. And I said, I'm very proud of who I am as a woman, as a mom. And that's what I bring to the table. I bring that passion and, and, and that foot forward. And I often tell people, I said, I have a different lens. I'm like, when I make a decision, I think about my children and how is it going to affect them? And I know some people in my council are like, you know, I've got, you know, a couple of years left, you know, who cares, right? And I said, whoa, stop the bus. You know, I've lived here for a long time and my kids are going to be here. And I do care about what the decision is and you really need to think hard about what we're doing and the, the environment we're creating for them. So. Now, it's, it's, it's interesting. Every day is interesting.
I want to turn to the second segment and I want to preface it by saying, this is a conversation between the councillor and myself. It's not a motion of council, this is not a direction of council, this is not a policy of council. This is the councillor's opinion. For those who are about to send their emails, please don't, please don't. I really don't like responding to every single one saying the exact same thing I just said now, but here we are. Councillor, in your opinion, what do you believe is the biggest issue or issues facing the, facing Brazzo County today?
Honestly, Chris, I truly believe my community is wondering how they're going to pay their power bill, how they're going to put food on the table. And what the world's going to look like from a year from now, two years from now, three years from now. Everybody in my community is, and this is, this is hard to say, coming from an oil and gas industry, a very strong community. You know, resource based community who work for a living, who are very proud to work and very proud to have what they have. But I am, I, there is a sediment in the community and it's, you know, I was in our food bank the other day. I was making actually a donation on behalf of a, of a organisation I'm a part of. And what they're telling me and it's, it's everybody, everyone is struggling right now. Inflation is hitting us so hard. It's incredible. Food bank is up 40, in my community alone, my food bank usage is up 40% over this time last year. Never in the two volunteers that I was speaking with, had they ever had oilfield workers come in and need help. They are saying they've never seen the amount of working families. So that's where mom and dad or, you know, the, the working adults in the household are coming and using the food bank. And these are people with good paying jobs. But with interest rates rising, I, I, that is probably the biggest thing. And that is what's actually keeping me up. And it's one of those things. I know it's not a municipal issue, but it is a municipal issue. A lot of people in our communities, our mortgages are going to be coming up here. I bet you in the next year to three years and with, you know, that are coming with two, you know, 2.4, 2.7% interest mortgage rate on their, on their mortgage are now looking at five and 6% mortgage rates. And what's that going to do? And, and, you know, power bills coming in. I just, I was actually just talking to, to a family and their power bill was $800 last month. And they actually looked at their consumption and it was down from the previous year, but that's where the power, power prices are at. And that is what I think are the biggest thing in my community is going to be in the coming months. Christmas is coming and I know people are already panicking about what Christmas is going to look like. And this is coming from working, hardworking families and hardworking individuals in my community.
And I know, I am going to ask the stupid million dollar question here and I apologize if this comes across insensitive. This is not a, like you said, this is not a municipal issue, but there is a municipal aspect to this issue. You have just, you've said in the previous conversation that the, the county hasn't seen a tax increase. Inflation has kind of dealt with that. But families who are struggling rely on services and they rely on libraries, they rely on FCFS, they rely on food banks like you just. They rely on food banks, like you just said. And those are aspects that the municipality, the county can deal with. Those are the aspects that the county can sort of have a helping hand in. How do you do that? Because you you can yell into the void of provincial politics. You can yell into the extreme void of federal politics. But you have things you can do locally here. What do you see as your role as a council and you as a councillor to sort of help address some of these issues in the short term until we sort of hopefully see a light at the end of the tunnel?
And that's it's it's a good question. And what we can do and control is actually, we're heading into budgets here in the next month or so. And it's it's. But it's it's going to be having that frank conversation with the community. I know there's lots of asks out there and there's a lot of wants and I'll say wants. And we're going to have to be really um very transparent and very open and having those conversations about the needs versus the wants in the community right now. Um, and 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 being able to focus on on just providing those key core services to to residents. Um, that being said, I know, we always talk about, you know, the the property tax increase. Um, and I I think we can do it. I know we've got the capability around my table and in with my administration to 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 not have to do anything drastic, like raise taxes, um, but come together as a group and really focus on what are the needs and what are the wants. Um, and then in those needs, look for those efficiencies um and 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 make sure we're being as efficient as we can and as as best stewards as we can of the tax dollars that we're using um to run those programs and make sure um things are running top notch. And and it is a struggle. It's 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 hard. Um, and it takes a lot of brainpower and and a lot of will and a lot of hours to sit there and and find those efficiencies. And I often you hear me talking efficiencies and people instantly are going, oh, you're going to let people go. And that's actually not exactly, that's nowhere near what I'm insinuating. One of it's about going in and looking at the program and look, are we doing it the most efficient route? Are we the actually the best group to be offering that service? Is there somebody else there um that has access to a different pool of money that we don't that could be offering that service instead? So, um, and it's about sitting down and you know what, and being quite frank with the public. Um, and I know in rural Alberta and in my community, we have no issues doing that. And you know, I I'm often out having coffee with lots of residents and having those frank conversations. Um, they're tough. Trust me, they it's it's hard. It sucks. Um, being able to tell and having to say something, you know, no, that's not important right now. And, you know, even though they feel quite passionate about something, but explaining why it's not passion. And sometimes, like you said, if I listen, as I'm listening and they're telling me, it actually may change my mind. You know what? You might got, you know, got a point there. Let's see if we can figure out how to financially make something happen. But it is, it's going to be, it's going to be a really tough go.
You you talked about the needs and the wants, and I want to pick up on that for a second because I think that's an important aspect of this uh conversation about affordability. I think there's a third category that municipalities are looking at as well, and they're just not saying it openly. The needs, the wants, and the things that we've started, but we need to put off until a future date to sort of uh help alleviate some of these issues because cost of uh work has gone up, cost of uh services have gone up, cost of goods have gone up. Is that a conversation that the county or even rural municipalities in general? And I know I'm speaking as a broad stroke here, but need to start having as well to say, until we sort of see a light at the end of the tunnel, we may need to put off that road project that is twenty million dollars until two years. But I don't know if that twenty million dollar road is now going to be thirty million dollar road because we wait an extra two years.
And you just, those conversations are happening. And I know projects did get bumped this summer. Um, and I know projects in 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 my area got bumped too as well. Um, and 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 going to be sitting down and having that that relook at at things um in November too and seeing, you know, can we bump it even? Can we hold it off another year? We've got actually a couple paving projects and and we've already heard in in a council meeting, not even in our budget meetings. And it's, you know, can we, can we do, you know, can we put chip seal on for now to buy us another five years? And hopefully, when some of that tax money comes back from the oil and gas industry after their tax holiday, um, then we can look at pooling pooling that money for a couple of years and going back and doing that project. Um, and and our staff are phenomenal in giving us that information. Um, you know, I've got one road in particular. They said, you know what, you guys, if we don't fix this now, it's going to be instead of being an eight million dollar fix, it's going to be a fifteen million dollar fix. So, you know, in our professional and our background and keeping in mind, you know, the pressures that you're facing, we're telling you, you need to do this one. This has to get done or you're going to be facing a bigger bill at the end of the day. So, great conversation. And it's part of that, you know, being elected official, um, trying to find that balance, but also taking into account and listening to our professionals that we hire to to help run the organization from the administrative side. So it's that, it's about that teamwork, right?
Teamwork makes the dream work.
It it does. It does. So, yeah, it's, I know I'm talking all doom and gloom, so I'm hoping we can kind of talk.
We're going to talk about some good things. Let's talk about what's good going on in Brazzo County because you're right. There's always doom and gloom, but there's always the benefit. There's always the plus side. And give me some a silver lining that not everything is doom and gloom in Brazzo County.
You know, one thing I always, I do a lot of traveling. I'm very fortunate um with my line of works. And I say with an S because I do have other jobs. Um, I do, I do get to see a fair amount of the country um in North America and in in particularly rural Alberta. And I honestly, and I know I'm going to sound so one sided on this, but I do live in the the most beautiful community in the entire world. And I have the best people surrounding my community and so fortunate for that. Um, so oil and gas, obviously, uh, it was down. It's it's part of the cycle. I'm used to it. I'm thirty nine. I've been through, I think, well, I was too little to remember the eighties. Um, but we've been through since my kind of my adult and my teenage years. I've had three down cycles. And one thing I can tell you is when you're down, you can always pick yourself up and and brush yourself off and and do it again. So, um, that's happening. Um, some really exciting things um in our community is we are working with uh several companies that are trying to be very innovative in the oil and gas industry. So, um, we got one uh company, it's called Recover. They're taking drilling uh waste from uh from drilling out in the oil patch. Um, and instead of putting it in class two landfills, they're recycling it up to ninety nine percent of it's being recycled. Um, groundbreaking, earth shattering, huge hurrah. It of course isn't sexy because it's drilling mud. So you hear a little bit of it out in the media and stuff, but I don't think we're celebrating that enough, the innovation in the community. Um, another one we have is they're they're uh cleaning up and reusing uh wastewater, not wastewater, but wastewater from the oil and gas industry. Um, so we've got another company doing some really cool innovative work there. Um, and a couple other companies looking into move in. They've got projects. Um, one's got projects in Germany, uh, in Texas, and they're looking into my municipality for their, one of their third projects, um, and geothermal. So, um, incredibly exciting. That is one thing about uh my community. I know it's a buzzword right now, but I have never seen people who are more resilient um than my community. Um, you know, you knock us down by wildfires, you knock us down with the oil and gas turn. Um, but we're, we come back fighting and I think fighting harder every time we get knocked down. Um, and the sense of entrepreneurialism in my community is another reason I stay. I just, I love people's innovation. Um, I have, you know, very fortunate. Um, I have a young lady in my community. She literally works out of her basement. She runs um, one of the largest accounting firms in Canada. She's the lead for Western Canada and she works out of her basement and she's happens to be in my division. Um, and you would never know she's there. And she's literally out there taking the world over in the accounting world and she calls Brazu County home. And I'm, I just, I'm so fortunate. Um, it it's the people that make my community. Um, and I I couldn't and I wouldn't live anywhere else.
So I want to turn to a subject that's near and dear to my heart because as you have toured most of northern America in rural Alberta, I like touring as well. I like tourism. I think tourism is an aspect that municipalities need to do a better job at. That's just my own personal opinion because I think every community has a hidden gem or something that can drive tourism to their community. And I want to ask you, because I'm going to be coming through Brazzo, Brazu County here. So hopefully in the next few, next month or so, because I'll be coming up to the Edmonton area and making a pit stop to find your sign, to find your town hall. What should I do as a tourist or what should tourists do if they come to the county?
Well, fingers crossed, we've got snow. We have some of the, if you cross country ski, we have the most beautiful trail system in all of Alberta. Um, believe it or not, I actually often say we are the best kept secret, my area, um, outside of Banff and Jasper. So, um, I will, I will proudly say that. Um, we have, that's the one thing about our our municipality is the majority of us are, it's still in the green zone, which is, you know, under trees. Um, we are the second um community on the North Saskatchewan River. Um, so our river valley is is pristine and pretty much untouched. And actually, if you do see a little bit of activity down there, it's done so well, um, and so environmentally conscious, um, what's going on down there. But our river valley is stunning. Um, some of it's a little burnt at the moment from the from the spring, but it's still gorgeous down there. Um, we have campgrounds, um, probably wrong time of the year for it, but we have some of the most beautiful. And I stay in B C. Trust me, I'm like, I love camping. Um, you you'd be hard pressed to find more beautiful campsites than than what are in my community. Um, we have one Wiley West. It's right, um, right off of Highway twenty two, actually right near the bridge. Um, and it's a gorgeous, gorgeous uh campground to be in. Um, the Brazu Dam um is another highlight for us that you should take a drive out there. You can literally, you are on the dam when you drive on the road. Um, and it actually is a power source in the province. I don't think um every Dale Burtons are quite aware of. Um, that's in my backyard. Um, if all the power plants were to go down in the province, it's my dam and in my area that actually restarts the province's power grid up. Um, so it's kind of cool, kind of unique. Um,
That is massively unique.
It is. And it's been really cool. We have a fantastic partnership with the province uh with TransAlta and in the county. Um, and there's, again, there's day use areas out there. There's campgrounds out there. Um, and we do it all in conjunction with private industry with the province and our our municipality. So I'm really proud of that. Um, the drive is amazing. I've I've learned a lot. There's a motorcycle motorcycle group out there that I didn't know about because I'm not into motorcycling, but they come out from the cities, um, Edmonton and in the surrounding area. And they do a loop through our community through uh Cynthia Lodgepole, um, secondary highways. Um, so it'd be, um, you come down off of sixteen and you turn towards Cynthia. Um, that drive is absolutely stunning. I can guarantee you're going to see moose, elk, bears, you name it, you're going to see, maybe not this time of the year, the bears are starting to go to bed, but um, it's a beautiful drive. Um, and then you cut through, you come out at the dam and then you kind of loop back up through Drayton and they've got little stops along the way. Um, and I agree with you. I don't think rural Alberta does enough to promote their tourism. Um, there are little gems uh everywhere like that. And and it's it's just, I'm really proud of our our cross country ski trails. We have ATV trails actually in a provincial park that are sanctioned um that have been worked on with the province and our local ATV groups that are are amazing. Uh, we have horse trails. If you are into horseback riding, we have, again, probably some of the most beautiful trails in all of the province um that are kind of that best kept secret kind of scenario. Um, those trails with the horses uh run along the Pembina River, and I believe they have over eighty kilometers now of trail systems put in um along the along the Pembina River. And if that river is beautiful too, at this time of the year, it's low. So you can actually pretty much anywhere walk right across it. So it's 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 a cool, cool, unique um uh experience to do that too. So.
Where do you go?
There's, sorry?
Where do you go in the county? Where do you go to just decompress? After a long day of being mom, after a long day of being councillor, after a long day of being just a worker, where do you go to just let it all go and just recenter yourself? Because you know tomorrow is another day and you're going to have to get back at it and just do the exact same thing and try to solve the world's issue at a local level?
Two things. I hop in my car, being in rural Alberta, you got to drive everywhere, um, and actually driving and just hitting the back roads and honestly getting lost in my out in out in the wilderness and out in the farming country, taking, you know, oil and gas lease roads and just seeing where you where you end up. And it it always brings me and grounds me back when you see just how beautiful the community is. And that's what, that's what I'm there fighting for. I'm there to keep our community great and whole. Um, and if it's a nice warm day, I don't like cold. So if it's a warmer day, um, with a jacket, you'll hear the Pembina Nordic Ski Trails. So in the summer, they're open for walking trails. Um, and they follow along the North Saskatchewan River and it's absolutely stunning, absolutely stunning and and a a good place to ground. Um, and if you're coming from the Edmonton region, uh, we're less than an hour from the city. And I, again, I just, I don't think we do enough to promote what's in the area. Um, COVID was interesting. That was actually, we seen and everybody, you know, was in their houses. And I don't think they were because I think they were all in my county and they're all on my trail systems and, you know, bumping into people. Um, I'm like, oh, where are you from? Oh, we're from Srus Grove. Oh, we're from Edmonton. And we just, you know, we were out online and the the online community was chatting about how to get out and 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 get back to nature. And um, and uh, so that was really cool.
Did you see a boom from COVID? Did you see a boom, like people wanting to move to your county as well? Because they wanted an escape from the hustle and bustle of a city. And because you're so close, people are saying, hey, let's look at Brazzo County and see if we can find a house who with a lot more acreage and a lot more playground.
Yes. And you know what? Very quietly, I can say, yes, we are seeing an influx. Actually, we're seeing an influx of residents coming from Ontario and B C into our community right now. Um, and a lot of them I'm talking to are from suburbs or or urban centers. And um, uh, they're looking for that lifestyle change. Um, our cost of living, obviously, now I'm talking countrywide, our cost of living in Alberta is the lowest right now um in the country. So we're seeing that influx. And and Brazu County is, um, we're definitely uh seeing that benefit in the community. So, um, it's interesting. It itself brings its own complexity. It's it's teaching them, okay, now you're not in the city. You don't have garbage pickup every week. You actually have to take your garbage to to a specific site. Um, and uh, and it's great. It's great getting to know them, getting to know their experiences. Um, and I think our community is going to be better. Uh, we will be a better community, having people like that come in and 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 bring those different perspectives to the world. But it is, it's neat and we are seeing it very quietly. I talked to our local railtors. Um, and I'm actually blown away how many people we're we're seeing coming from out of province, moving into our area. So.
That's awesome. So I want to leave on the million dollar question. I think it's a question that every municipal politician needs to know how to answer. I think they know how to answer it, but I like putting it on the record. So for you, what do you believe? Oh, sorry, I should, I'm going to rephrase it here. It's the same question, just going to rephrase it a little bit. In your opinion, what makes Brazzo County such a unique place to live, to work, and to raise a family?
I truly believe it's the people in my community um that make the community. And I I had said it before, the entrepreneurial entrepreneurial spirit in my community, um, the welcoming you with open arms. Um, you know, if you're down, uh, you don't even need to say you're down in our community. Someone's right there beside you, giving you a hand up. Um, not a handout, but a hand up. Um, I I I just, I couldn't be more proud. I I actually, this 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 past Friday night, we have a a young mom in our community who lost her husband to cancer. Um, and again, I'm going to get emotional. I love my community. Um, over five hundred people turned up um to let that mom know she's not alone. Um, and I see that time and time. That's just one of examples of of hundreds that I see in our community. Um, and it it is truly the people in the community that make our community what it is today. Um, they are the hardest working individuals um that I've ever come across of. Um, and and like I said, if you're down, they're there to help you. Um, and it's beautiful. Um, you come out to our area. Um, there's trees, there's farmland, like we've kind of, we've kind of got it all. It's that, you know, that the whole thing you can see on a clear day, you see the mountains from my community. And, you know, we've got two amazing river systems. Um, you know, if you're into quadding, we can, we can accommodate that. If you're into walking and 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 cross country skiing, we can accommodate all of that. And and we've got groups in the community. That's the other unique part. All this, all this stuff that goes on in the community, it's the public and the in the people and the residents that make it happen with the volunteering um in those committees. And it is, it is truly amazing. And I would, I cannot wait till you come out. Um, and I sure hope you give me a shout because I would love to show you around our community. And then, you know, maybe I can convince you to move out.
Hey, if you can convince a certain partner of mine to do that, I will happily do that. I miss the rural living because I originally from, well, not originally, but I lived in Big Lakes County for some time. And I would move back in a heartbeat to the county because it was one of the best experiences of my life, just living and sort of being away from it, the hustle and bustle of it all. So that's my.
Love it. And I'm going to challenge any rural municipal elected official. I don't care if you're from Alberta or what, what, what province. Let's convince Chris and his family to move back out to rural Canada.
I appreciate that. But I will certainly look you up. I I want to make sure because it is, it's been on my bucket list to get out. And every time that I'm about to, I either get stopped or another politician, another municipal leader takes twelve hours of my time when I was expecting to only be four. So here we are.
And here we are. I see our time too as well. We probably could talk for another hour.
There you go. But I want to thank you so much, Cara, for doing this. Greatly appreciated. Um, and I say thank you a lot, but I say this respectfully to every single time I say it. Thank you for serving. Thank you for serving your community. I can imagine the issues you deal with on a day to day basis would probably just compound an average person, but you are stronger. You are a person who is, seems to be doing it for the right reason, which is community. So I want to thank you so much for serving your community, for being part of your community, and for talking about your community on the show today. So thank you.
Well, and you know, Chris, thank you. Um, it's, it's truly appreciated. And I can't thank you enough uh for what you're doing and the connections and the stories that you're getting out. Because I think uh you play a key and very important role in what I do and what elected officials do across Alberta and across this country. So I'm going to put it back on you and and thank you um for your dedication and uh and for the work that you're doing and um just getting our stories out there um and making those connections and 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 building those relationships and and building bridges because that's what it's all about. So thank you.
So I'm going to do a little shameless plug here, but I'm going to say, um, let's grab a coffee while we're at RMA next month. For those who are listening from RMA, come back to me.
I think we'll have quite a few coffees. I would, I'm very open to coffee. So it's my jam. It's what keeps me going. After I told you all this. It's my jam. It's what keeps me going. After I told you all the sleep that I lose, like coffee is my best friend.
Me too. Thank you for joining us for another great episode of the Cross Border Interviews. Your continued interest in diving deep into the issues that shape our communities across Canada is both inspiring and essential to our mission of the show. Now, as we wrap up, it is my hope that you've gained valuable insights into the intricate world of municipal politics from our guest. Now, if you found this dialogue as engaging as I did, don't forget to hit that subscribe button today. By subscribing, you're not just staying up to date with the latest conversations, but you're also playing a vital role in supporting our endeavor to bring you more meaningful content like you saw today. Now, we couldn't embark on this journey without your support as well. Creating content that sheds light on the issues affecting municipalities requires dedication and resources. Now, if you believe in our mission and want to help us to continue to grow, please consider visiting our support page. Conveniently linked in the show notes or by visiting www.crossborderinterviews.ca. Every contribution, big or small, goes a long way in ensuring that we can keep delivering the kind of content that you've come to expect from us. Now, once again, thank you for being part of the Cross Border Interviews community. Your engagement is what fuels our passion for shedding light on the issues that truly matter. Until next time, stay informed, stay engaged and most importantly, just keep talking.